Forgiven.
I'm still wearing these because I've got this brace on my ankle.
Oh, what'd you do?
Twisted it. Still falling.
Oh. I thought, I thought you were wearing cool socks and she's wearing just the summer, this is the summer fit, right?
Nothing would make me happy.
Thank you. Alright, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is our, um, the June work session for the Silver Consolidated Board of Education. Welcome, members of administration, fellow board members, and those joining us in the audience. Welcome and thank you for joining us. Patrick, will you do a roll call? Actually, today is June 16th and we are in session at 5:31. Now, will you please do a roll call?
Um, this is Montenegro.
Here.
Dr. Diaz. Myself, here. Mr. McMillan. And Mrs. Clement.
Here.
Thank you. Um, we do expect Dr. Diaz and Mr. McMillan to join us. Um, so we don't have any notice that they won't be joining us, but just for the record. Alright, so consideration and approval of today's work session agenda, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McMillan, and there is.
Really?
Really?
Again, I looked and then looked. So, thank you, Mrs. Clement. Mr. McMillan is here at 5:32. Excuse me, I just merged those two. We have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. First up on our agenda is our Special Education Director, Mr. Shane Coker, presenting our IDEA B application as well as our Special Ed Procedures Manual update. Welcome.
President, members of the board, appreciate you guys giving me this time to kind of go over the IDEA B application process.
It's beginning loud enough.
There we go. Okay. So, as you, as you are probably aware, um, every year we have to apply to get our IDEA B, um, monies. That's our federal monies that we use to, uh, you know, fund sources, uh, dealing with special education and everything else. And this year is no different. We haven't submitted the application. It was kind of a hurried process because, you know, some of the things were, you know, being farmed out for different RNCs and everything, but, uh, the great work was Michelle and myself. We were able to get everything in. This is really the final piece is kind of going over it and getting your, you guys' approval for the application during the, uh, normal session.
Okay.
So, our operating plan, um, every year, it, it's pretty much the same consensus every year. We want to improve our, uh, graduation rates and then, um, obviously we want to, uh, decrease our dropout rates. So those are our two focused areas. Almost every year, that's, that's, uh, what the Federal, um, Department of Education asks each state to focus on is, is those two areas. The data here, I didn't have a chance and I could not find any updated data. So the data you're seeing is from the last time that I presented. Um, I know where we are experiencing a little bit higher dropout rates, not necessarily with special education students, but across the board. Um, I just don't have those, that, uh, that statistic in front of you right now. But, uh, talked to, uh, several districts and, and they're experiencing issues of kids just not finishing high school for some odd reason or another, or, um, they're going to GED and if any kid does, you know, take the GD route, they are considered a dropout from high school. Alright. We were, um, allocated a little less this year than we, uh, previously had. Uh, Michelle did inform me that wasn't as bad as some of the other federal budgets, but still, we kind of took a, took a little hit. Uh, right now, we're looking at our allocation entitlement of 969,400. This is down from about 1.22.
Last year was a million fifty-seven thousand.
Million fifty-seven, so we're down about seventy. Give or take. Okay. Then we have our preschool allocation of 25,041, and then we did have a carryover of 231,504. Number's accurate. Always have to look at Michelle. So what we do with these is, uh, we work, uh, we have, uh, basically five objectives that we concentrate on. Objective one is, uh, direct instruction extended school year. So some of those funds are, the majority of those funds are for direct instruction, instructing those, uh, kids with disabilities. And then, of course, we have our extended school year program, which is not summer school. This is actually a, a program that is devised to help kids either that experience of regression after a certain amount of time, and it takes a long time to recoup that learning that they lost. So we really kind of gauge it over two breaks. We have the Christmas break that's, uh, two weeks long. And then this year, we also had our, uh, fall, or spring break, sorry, that was also two weeks. So I asked the, uh, special ed teachers, case managers and everything to really kind of look at those breaks and see which kids are experiencing regression and recruitment issues. And we identified a pretty good amount. We have, we have actually, uh, two programs, one at the high school and one at the elementary, and servicing roughly anywhere between seven to eight kids i- in each of those classrooms. So. Uh, objective two is instructional sport, support. This is for supplies, materials, uh, employment, work study. We do offer work study for, uh, students with disabilities. And then, um, child find. Child find is, uh, ongoing. It's a yearly thing. It's mandated by the federal government that we do child find and the state. And, uh, we also do two events, one in the fall, one in the spring, to kind of just pull everything together. Objective three is for, um, special education and related services. These are ancillary, um, mile, mileage and reimbursement for ancillary staff. We do have some ancillary that are primarily stationed in, in Silver, but they also go out to clubs. And we do my, uh, mileage reimbursement when they have to go out there and, and, uh, provide services. We have private school funding. Um, right now, we have two private schools within our district boundaries. That is the Guadalupe Montessori School and also Calvary Christian. Right now, we do have at least one student that is attending the, uh, Montessori School and none at Calvary at this time. And then, of course, uh, objective eight is elementary access costs, secondary access costs. Those are, those are costing an excess of the average annual per student expenditure. So preschool funding covers mandated child find events that we hold twice a year and also assist, uh, assist in IA sales. And also too, we are tasked to, uh, make sure we do the part C to part B transition. This is done before a kid turns three and they are considered now under part B of IDEA. Previously, they were under IDEA part C, which is, uh, basically infant up to two years old. And then when they turn three, the district takes over. Um, we have to have that, uh, conference within 90 days, uh, before the child's third birthday, and then we start our services regardless of where they're at. They have to be in a 3K program, but we start those services once they turn three. So sometimes that could be in the middle of the year. And that is all I have on the application. Right now, I can tell you that the application is sitting at substantially approvable. And, uh, like I said, I just need to upload more items from this board meeting into our, into our document center of SharePoint, and we should be good to be approved. You guys.
Any questions for Mr. Coker?
Just thank you for putting all this together, presenting to us.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Coker, the, their graduation rate number, was that the 23, 24, or 22, 23?
I think it was 22, 23.
So I'm looking at the 23, 24, uh, four-year graduation rate. So, aside in schools, students with disabilities was 80.2%, or New Mexico was 68.5%.
So Silver is obviously doing something right. We're well above what the state average is. And, uh, really honestly, I think that was just an actual average. It wasn't state specific, but yes, that, that's, that's a good thing.
And I'll add to that, the, so that was the four-year cohort, understanding that, uh, students with disabilities, depending on their IAP, can be with us a little bit longer. So when you look at the five-year cohort rate, it's 86.9% Silver Schools in comparison to New Mexico, 73.8% in that students with disabilities. And if you look at the six-year cohort rate for students with disabilities, you're looking at a continued 88% graduation rate with New Mexico at 77.4%. Just looking at those cohorts, and that's the 23, 24-year, uh, cohort rates. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir. I'm there for you.
So primarily, the application is to say what you're going to be doing with the money that you're receiving.
Yes.
Basically, and we are still able to budget the carryover on this one?
Yes, they, um, depending on, um, as they award it, they will let us know whether we have carryover or not. And with IDEA B, we have the option to do with the carryover and we always select that option.
Okay.
And both our budgets, our IDEA B and our IDEA B preschool have been approved that coincide with this, uh, application.
Awesome. Okay, any other questions? Alright, did you, you have Special Education Procedures Manual?
I do.
Okay, let's go right for that.
Okay, again, another annual, uh, thing that takes place in the world of special education is that Walsh, uh, Walsh-Giegos does update our, our, uh, Special Education Handbook of Policies and Procedures. Um, that was updated and they were actually nice enough to send a table of changes. I think last time it was just a bunch of highlighted areas that they did and everything else. And, um, honestly, I looked through a lot of this. One of the things, and I will talk about this briefly in just a moment, but most of what I'm seeing is like, like a lot of housekeeping related items where they had to clean up some language because the language just didn't jive with the new Department of Education, um, as far as Federals go. One of the things that may cause alarm is on, on the very first one, deleted language related to gifted children per amendments affected July 31st, 2023. So, um, basically gifted was kind of taken out of these, this particular law as far.
Can I pause you for just a minute?
Yes.
What are you looking at? Because we have a 417.
This was also, uh, attached with that on the table of changes underneath it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Table of changes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I can follow.
So on the first one, um, it did say deleted, uh, language related to gifted children per amendments effective July 31st. That's because gifted got shifted under a separate law to, to, uh, provide clarity. Um, basically what is, is, uh, by separating gifted from disability provision, the state ensures each group has a clear dedicated policy framework. So even though the feds do not recognize gifted as a disability under IDEA, the state still mandates that we provide gifted opportunities for our children in New Mexico. Silver City is definitely one of them that does that. So, um, that's why they went ahead and moved it out of that and we follow under, under the other law. Um, it also improves governance and support with gift, gifted under its own chapter, which is 6-31-3. Uh, we must now follow the standalone set of procedures. So. And we were required to submit a gifted education plan, which was submitted on time. And I don't know, I didn't hear much about it afterwards. Just that he got it. So hopefully we'll hear something ever, over that. Outside of that, not many earth-shattering changes in the policies and procedure manuals. It's still following everything that the federal guidelines do. So I will take questions.
Any questions for Mr. Coker on the Procedures Manual update? Um, just for clarity, this is a Procedures Manual that you have to operate by and your department has to operate by, therefore the school.
Yes.
Yeah, and so that's something that we, um, approve annually.
Yes.
To make sure that it's in line with all new legislative stuff or anything that they see.
Correct. Yeah, Walsh-Giegos does a really good job of staying on top of all the changes in the legislature, making sure the language is matching what the federal guidelines are, what the state in New Mexico is requiring.
Perfect. Any other questions? Alright, well, you got it done in 15, so way to go. Next up, we have our Associate Superintendent, Mrs. Cindy Barris with our title applications. Welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Hawkins, colleagues of us. So unfortunately, I'm going to steal the same roll of thunder as Shane did, and we're going to go over some budgets with Cindy. So you know me and my quotes. This quote really reminds me of this district. Money is only a tool. It will take you wherever you wish, but it will not replace the driver. And as we look at the funds that we have and the priorities that we set, we're the drivers of that. And it may not be as much, but we still, our focus is still on our kids. And so, because that's who we are. We take a look at the first set of budgets. Now you're looking at it and you're saying, okay Cindy, but what are the actual reductions? So when you look at Title I, it was an actual reduction in regular allocations. So Madam President, you were asking about carryover and I will talk about that. But the numbers that you see here are only the actual application numbers. And then we'll talk a little bit about carryover. Because when I'm given the first set of numbers, not given any carryover. And Michelle and I were looking for weeks before they kind of posted things that had stuff in there about carryover. Um, so it's still there. We do, if carryover is allowed, or they have it, or we, we have it, we will receive it and budget it within the same parameters of what the application has already been used for. So in Title I, we actually saw a reduction of 117,115.41 cents from the annual application. And they, the one thing that I'm going to mention that is a little bit astounding, and you'll see that in the board meeting, is they actually took back this year of our allocation. And they took back over $290,000 this year from Title I. So when you look at our original, so all of those numbers don't consider the amounts that they took back this year. Because it's a state and federal grant, they can come back with us and either reward us more dollars or reduce the allocations, and they did in May. So it's a, it's a little bit difficult and impacts some of the things that we're planning on doing over the summer with that 2, 290. The carryover, um, for last year was 425,512.20. And this year, our carryover is projected to be 137,617. And so just in carryover alone, that reduction is over 287,000. So when you look at all of those pieces, the total reduction in Title I is 404,954.61 cents. Not counting the takeback that they are taking back. So in Title I, that's a big one. The other thing I want you to remember when it comes to Title I is when we have people salaries paid out of that, and we do, when salaries go up, the amount that it costs goes up. And so that's almost a reduction in the programs and things that we were doing because that salary expense goes up and our title budget went down. So the, um, percentage of increase, they receive, those employees receive as well.
Right.
So in Title II, luckily, there was only a small reduction of 1,434.80 from last year. Um, but last year, we received a carryover of 33,781. And this year, our projected carryover is $1. They also took back out of Title II this year, which is 23,145. Um, we're looking at a net loss of 35,214.80 for Title II. And remember, Title II is primarily our professional development, our recruitment, retention, things like that. Title IV, we don't apply for Title III. We don't have a large enough, uh, bilingual population to qualify for Title III for the amount of, um, things that we need to do for that money. So it's generally about 66 students. When we looked at it the last time, I think it would only generate like a thousand dollars. And there were so many components to it that when you took the time required, it just was not good. So moving to Title IV, um, Title IV saw a reduction of 23,777.83. Um, we did see an increase in potential carryover of 18,296. And last year's carryover was only 18, 8,000, but with the reduction, it's still a loss of 14,153. What are those used for? Title I, over half is used in salaries. We have, um, things that require parent participation. Uh, there is a private school allocation that we have to give. Primarily, it goes to summer school and site allocations. Title II, teacher mentorship, PD, there is a private school allocation for that as well in, um, the stipends for heartfelt positions and IAs. Title IV, behavior supports, um, at some of our schools, the history field trips that Mr. Hawkins gets to take and our fourth grade to increase our focus on our New Mexico history within our her, history standards, the SHAC committee, and again, private school. And so I linked all those to our strategic plan that we have that's on the board. It, it doesn't change anything, but those are links to our strategic plan. When we take a look at the federal budgets, Title V saw an increase, I got a little bit excited, of 8,780.64 from its original. This year, they took back 14,380. Um, our carryover last year was 44,341. This year is 33,000. After everything is all said and done, it's still a net loss of 2,110.40. Next Gen and Carl Perkins is a two-year grant, so that stayed the same. They just had changing in the application process. So these are the things that Title V is used for. Lexia is a reading support program, tutoring and summer school for Title V. Carl Perkins is our professional development and classroom supplies for our CTE teachers and our CTSOs. Those are student organizations. Next Gen is professional development and again, classroom supplies. Because remember, those classrooms, when you're talking welding, foods, the amount of supplies they need in that class is extensive. I don't want to say excessive because it's not. It's just extensive to do the things that we need to do. Here's where it gets a little difficult. Innovation Zone is not open yet. I know this one is near and dear to your heart, Mr. Khan, but we, we are getting word that it should be open, but should is not a shall when you're talking legal terms. Um, so we're just waiting. FII, Federal Income Index, is no longer a grant available to the state. That was 6, $60,000. That was granted to Sixth Street last year. That is no longer available or looked at to any, any schools. FAEA, that's our Fine Arts Education Act, Elementary Education Act. I don't have any dollars for that. Um, but they do cover most of the positions and anything else it goes to is, um, just the drama and the NBI. It's a lot. Um, but that's what I have for you. The total reduction, I do have one thing, the total reduction is 456,432.81 cents. This past year, they took back 328,501. We have no FII, which was the 60,020, um, $20 for Sixth Street. We have no CSI because we don't qualify. That is a great thing. We don't qualify for CSI. That's targeted intervention through the state. Um, that was La Plata at 105,000, so that's a good thing. And also the school-based mental health grant is no longer there. So.
Questions for Mrs. Barris?
Yes, Mrs. Barris.
Mrs. Clement. Don't have to train my word.
It's just become a habit now.
It has.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. On the reductions and even the takeback, is there a basis on that? Is that based on enrollment, on need, on just overall state funding? Or is it just the reverse magic wand that says, or is it a matter of we get suspended and they know where we're at and they're, we're taking back what you have spent or allocated? I mean, what is the basis of the reduction and the takeback?
I can tell you, we, we don't get that information. Mrs. Clement, we don't get that information on why they're taking it back, but what we do get is, hey, there's this takeback. We have our assumptions, but that's just what they are, is assumptions. But I can tell you, in my tenure here, which isn't a long time, I think we're finishing year four, never seen anything like this. This past year. We've never seen takebacks like this this past year. Oftentimes, the state, when they allocate the dollars and you have the plan, they approve the plan, then they allow for that. Because in Title I, what you saw is I have a plan for summer school. So when you take the money in May, it doesn't allow for the extent of what I wanted to do in summer school or the summer professional development. So they do, do they see the plans? The answer to that is yes. Do they look at the budgets and see what you have in there? I, I don't know, and I don't think so.
Madam President, uh, Ms. Clement, members of the board, I also wanted to clarify, um, just to add to the context of it. So as I understand it, the current 2026 federal budget included approximately a 69% uh, reduction to the title programs. And so that is going to likely what is happening, and this is, I would not take this to the bank, but by any stretch of the imagination, no pun intended. But I do think that they're, they're probably conservatively looking at what they're allocating out right now, not knowing what reduced amount the states may receive to disperse to school districts. So it's easier for them to hold back more and then later, if they have it, send it out, than to say, this is what you have initially, and then as Cindy described, clawback. Right now, they're still working on the, the 2026 federal budget. I do believe the title programs are on the proverbial chopping block, and that's where some of this is coming from.
Thank you.
Mr. McMillan?
Madam President, um, I guess a further clarification on the state level, is that PED taken, taken back for state funding, or is that a different?
It's a little bit of both. So it's state and federal funding. So when you're looking at your Title I, II, and IV, um, even Title V, which is your rural O, those are budgets that although they filter through the state to you, those are federal budgets. When you look at, um, Next Gen, that's a state budget. So all of those different budgets are being impacted. Um, the federal budget, like when I said there's no longer FII, that's federal, the Federal Income Index. So I think, and you have to remember, on the federal budget, their budget timeline is different than ours. It's a federal budget, so it goes from January to December as opposed to June to July. And so when you're looking at those allocations for the next year, they're hitting two fiscal years. And so when you look at that, without a federal budget being passed and knowing what's coming through, I think they're conservatively trying to measure that, and there, there is some, you know, fear to things that are, just like we were talking about, things that are important to them, that they need to be able to cover.
It's alarming, but, uh, thank you for the clarification.
I'm sorry, I didn't have great news to deliver.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mrs. Barris. Alright, uh, that concludes our work session agenda. Right on time, uh, motion for adjournment, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Clement. Um, Patrick, will you please do a roll call?
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz? Myself, yes. Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Clement?
Yes.
We. We will be meeting up right back at 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the June meeting for the Silver Consolidated Board of Education, our regular board meeting. Welcome, members of administration, fellow board members, members in the audience, esteemed guests. Thank you for joining us. It is June sixteenth at six oh two PM. We are in session. Patrick, will you please do a roll call?
Mrs. Montenegro?
Here.
Dr. Diaz? Myself here. Mr. McMillan?
Here.
And Mrs. Clement?
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and the New Mexico Flag Salute. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Next item on our agenda is the review and approval of minutes. In your board packet, you will find minutes from the work session and regular board meeting of May nineteenth, as well as the finance meeting of May fifteenth and our special board meeting of May twenty-seventh. I open the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Next up, we have our consideration and approval of today's agenda. I open the floor for a motion.
Motion?
Motion by Mrs. Clement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. The next section of our agenda is our information and presentations. These are non-action items under programs and presentations. We are joined this evening by Senator Gabriel Ramos. Thank you for joining us in recognition of Cliff and Silver High salutatorian and valedictorians, as well as the SHS softball team. Thank you for joining us.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much for having me here today. I know that you all have been so busy with graduations and a bunch of state championship recognitions. And, you know, we applaud you. Applaud all, all the people who've been working so hard to recognize these young ladies. And I also want to thank you for going up to Santa Fe. Those of you that have spent some time up there with us, we really do appreciate it. I, I really do appreciate you, Mr. Hawkins, you know, being able to call you sometimes kind of late and asking you a few questions on some of these bills. I wish I'd had a little more time to, to reach out and ask about a few more. But now that we're got the groove going again, I'm going to be counting on you quite a bit. So I really do appreciate everything you do for this district. People don't know this, but behind the scenes, he's really working hard, looking at the different laws that are going through or different bills that are going through that might become law and how they're going to affect you all here. So I appreciate you. I've seen you up in Santa Fe quite a bit and it's very important to be there to, to be upfront and figure out what's going on. Again, all of you that I saw up there, we appreciate you. It makes us feel good to have people come up and visit and care enough to, to come up to Santa Fe. And I want to come up front today also to invite our state champions to the, to the roundhouse in January. So we could recognize them on the Senate floor if possible. I know it takes a lot of money to get them over there, but I think it's well worth having them come by. And it'd be nice to have them come up on Grant County days so they could kind of see that whole process and make it a good learning experience for them at the same time. And again, I, I want to recognize the valedictorian from Silver High, which is Joshua Beck, and the salutatorian, Isaac Beck, if they are here.
So I take you all the brother. Yeah, we appreciate you. Congratulations. I will have a certain amount of time, like these other ones did, but we will definitely get you recognized. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And it takes a lot to get your grades right. And then to get it best, I think in school is, and then mom and dad must be so proud to have all of your kids.
Well, just out of curiosity, what was that, what was it like right towards the end when you were trying to calculate grades and you were, were you studying with your brother? Were you studying extra? How were you trying to figure out who was going to get that?
I changed a couple of classes to get extra arts class.
How smart of the older brother.
Minor detail, minor detail.
I gotta get all of them in spring. I would also like to recognize the valedictorian from Cliff High School. You also? Orient, Greg Dusty? He wasn't in the year, he's a freshman. He's not your brother though, right? Well, again, congratulations. It takes a lot to, to study really hard and get the highest GPA of the school. And congratulations, appreciate it, sir. No one made fun of the fact that I'm wearing these shoes today. You notice?
Yeah. Yes.
I always pick my anger, build a song, fought the law, on the ground, to the ground.
I understand.
I've got these little breaks on, but you can tell I'm extremely self-conscious. So I had to articulate that because I just knew someone was going to take a picture. Why is his toes out?
Well, thank you very much for, for your explanation.
I did also want to recognize our state champion. You know, I've, these last two weeks, I've been around so many state champions, even so lost. Even both of our schools from southwest New Mexico got state championships. That's been unreal. And for that to ever happen again is going to make the moon and the stars and everything align correctly for this to ever happen. So hopefully it does. And congratulations to you all. Been able to see a lot of you play since we, I'm not sorry to have my back to you.
No, you're fine.
But since you all were real little, I've been an umpire for a long time, for twelve years. And I've umpired for Billy and JV and C Teen and Larson. Got to see a lot of you play. And since you all were real little, great to see that final accomplishment of winning a state championship, especially for you seniors. That is, how many seniors do we have here today? We have four seniors. That is so awesome. That means we're depending on you all to come back and win the state championship next year, right? Right? Well, and you don't expect nothing less, but again, it's real hard to win a state championship. My daughter took second three times. Okay? So literally the stars and the moon and everything has to line correctly. And you have to have great games to win. So for you all to do this, it's just, it's just an honor to be here with you. Coaches, thank you for what you do. That it is not easy being a coach, first of all. It is not easy dealing with all the stuff that you require for, for your students. And it's definitely not easy to coach a state championship. Just people, I hope to see you all back next year as coaches. Of course, it's also these guys who are, you all have a great team as coaches. And again, I congratulate you all. It's just been an honor to see you all succeed the way you all did. I was keeping track of you all on Facebook, you know, reaching out to different parents. And just to hear that you all won, it was just, it was just amazing to me and congratulations to you all. If I can call your name, if you mind coming up and give your, yeah? This, the certificate reads, the New Mexico State Senate, fifty-seventh legislature, two thousand twenty-five. New Mexico State Senate hereby recognizes you all for Silver High School girls' varsity softball, NAA, for a state champions. I know you all have been honored by so many people already, but it's very well deserved. It's an honor to be a state champion. And I was never a state champion. I was unfortunate by how it was. But, but congratulations to you all again. And can I have Vanessa Lucero? Elena Boras? Azariah Madrid? Laya Vasquez? Jaylen Carvados? You all played this week. And this girl hit some home runs. I don't think still have any ground. Estrella Orozco? Estrella Jimenez? Maria? Kenya Yeto? Can you save my, save, save my face a few times? I was an umpire. Maya Sanchez? Alexa Chavez? Ray Lynn Lopez? Isabel Diaz? Ariel Alvarado? Lisandra Martinez? Sofia Allen? Maria Buenas? Jason Sanchez? Eddie Lucero? Yen Dia? Johnny Sanchez? Brandon and Bokan? Again, I'd like to just finish off with a big congratulation. Use this experience through life, please. You have to work really hard for everything you do when it comes to softball and achieving your goals as a state champion. Use that heart that you have for the rest of your life. Okay? Life isn't easy. Being state champion isn't easy. But you work hard at it and everything has positive place. And use that throughout the rest of your life. Use that method to usually practicing, practicing, practicing to achieve all the goals that you have. Congratulations to you again.
Would you like to get a picture with them?
If you don't mind.
Yes.
And remember, I'm a short one, so.
You want to go on?
For the end, the three of the sitting. And a little bit that way though. There you go. Perfect. Perfect. So you two, I've got, you got to get in the, in here. There you go. There you go.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to save short people in the front.
Over, this is going to all look at me. And I'm going to take two more. And I apologize for your face. I took fifteen. One of those should work.
Hold on, we have parents. Hold on a quick guy. Thank you.
You can head over there. And Mr. Alvarez is there for the schools. Good to sir.
That's okay. Okay. Next, we have our SCEA president. It says nothing to present, but would you like to? You're good? Why don't, will you just come up to the podium? You can come introduce her at the podium if you want.
Why am I standing like this?
Hi. We worked together in the same room. She's a new member of our bargaining committee. She's going to be our secretary treasurer for the union. So.
Just an introduction. Nice to meet you.
Yes.
Welcome. Yes, thank you. Anything else?
We didn't have to be the person this time, maybe next time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. So information to the board is next on our agenda. Superintendent with the Decker introduction. They are the firm that we selected through RFP's process for the Cliff project. I got to sit in on a meeting last week and was very impressed. So was happy to be able to just kind of listen in. Mr. Hawkins, go ahead.
Thank you for that. Madam President, members of the board, we, we know that we will have many conversations with Decker presenting. But I did want to take this opportunity, one, to thank them. They were incredibly well organized. They know what they're doing. They've clearly built a school or two or three hundred. And so they did a great job at putting us at ease. And I just wanted to give them a brief opportunity to introduce themselves and to, to give you a feel of what you can expect over the next eighteen to twenty-four months. Of course, as I understand it, they're planning on coming in pretty fast and getting the whole thing done in eight months, which I was impressed with, but.
He's joking.
I am so joking. But just, they all just went into a cold sweat back there.
No pressure.
With that, the, the floor is yours. Thank you, gentlemen. With that said, uh, the, the floor is yours. Uh, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Superintendent, Madam President, members of the board. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We've assembled from fly for this, um, G D presentation from just one screen. Please let me know when you can see it on your end.
Can see it. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. And, you know, despite the cold sweat, we are here to support you guys no matter what. So thank you so much for having us tonight. Um, just a little bit about Decker. Um, since we are all, um, working on this project together, I wanted to introduce a bit about the firm for tonight's presentation. But, uh, Decker has a dedicated K through twelve studio. Having completed more than three hundred school projects, why that number stuck out at Mr. Hawkins' mind when he introduced us there. And, and we'll go to the team here in a bit, but just a bit more, uh, in regards to our relevant school experience and recent school experience. Um, we've been primarily focused working on consolidation or placement projects, particularly in rural areas, which is why we were really targeting, uh, the Cliff project for many, many years, understanding your district's needs and, and what the school's program entails. And we were excited to just be a part of your team. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to do so. You know, it's one thing to definitely build a school, but it's another thing to build a school and design it on an occupied campus replacement. And we are definitely qualifying this sub project as an occupied campus replacement project. And the logistics that come with those are things that we are definitely specialized in providing you the utmost experience and service when it comes to the project itself, having completed more than twenty-five occupied campus projects. And we're proud to say as a firm, um, that having completed more than eighty projects in just the past ten years on schedule is something that we're definitely bringing to your team moving forward with the Cliff school's project. And so with that, uh, I just wanted to, just to, wanted to introduce the team to you all, the, the team that you will be from start to finish on the project. Team, uh, my name is Juan Dorado and I will be your principal in charge. It is my overall responsibility for the success of the project. We could dedicate the resources this project requires to be a success for you all and Silver Consolidated Schools and the community of Cliff. Um, Sanjay Kadu, which he'll weigh, he's on camera tonight. He is going to be our design principal, uh, who is going to be leading the effort on the design aspects of the project. Sanjay is coming with many, many years of experience designing many schools. Uh, a lot of them thankfully drew, um, recognition, uh, recognition of awards, um, as well. That, um, we're bringing his experience along with his leadership on the design side of the project to the team. And Juan Diego is also on camera tonight. He'll weigh Juan. Juan Diego will be your project manager. Um, he's bringing a breadth of experience and is a short response time away to definitely make sure this project moves forward with, um, keeping budgets and schedule in mind in forefront of his goals to make sure this project succeeds. Our other team members of Kurt Morton, who is our project architect, Ken Wood, who is our construction administrator, and Courtney McKelvey, who is our campus planner, landscape architect, are all under the services of Decker, which we're proud to say, um, as a firm, we offer not just architectural services in-house, but also, um, landscape and planning, structural engineering, interior design, and crime prevention through environmental design certified, um, experts that are going to be evaluated and participating in the design along the way. It, we're very proud of the fact that we have, uh, we are continuing our partnership as well with Weber Engineering, who is their local consultant, as our civil engineer for the project. And we're bringing lots of experience about schools and that area of the state. So having her as a part of our team, we felt was very crucial to the success of the project moving forward. And then our other engineers in the team, which will be handling mechanical, electric pumping plumbing, are bridges and packers who've worked with for over thirty-plus years on many, many school projects. And so this is your project team and we're excited to be, and honestly blessed to be a part of this project moving forward. We're excited to see what the future holds.
Thank you all. And again, thanks to Madam President, members of the board. Jamie Garcia-Burki. And I should say, Mr. Alcain has been here, but it's just a way to say. Yeah, yeah, we enjoy. Um, you know, on this project, there are a lot of things that we need to focus. But predominantly, we want to make sure that seventeen, we do. If a project is unique and for Cliff, we want to make sure that the design is flexible, is punctual, is efficient. We not only want to engage the design company, but we want to work with you all as a school board. We want to engage our community, want to engage parents and even students in the process. We want to bring our extensive experience to make sure that this project is nothing but a team. On every project, we have to really understand what it is that we don't know. More importantly, on a project, like campus, where we are doing a transformation, we want to really take it deep to really understand not only what's above and below, but what's underground, also that we really minimize the unknown category. Most importantly, we want to design a school, which are very cool, that is, uh, our twenty-first century learning technology. And like Juan Dorado said, this team that you see today is the team that you aspire for the foreseeable future. Design, construction, and then we want the most important thing, evaluation, that we are committed to on each and every project that we run. We do have a very structured design. It comes along when we are designing schools, sort of, years now. But for every school that we work on, it's all about really understanding the district's mission, which in our case is to forge strong positive connections with students, as well as your mission statement, which really is enhanced by the fact that Cliff and even say what is a rural company. And that we want to engage our students, really experience that. But these are the key things, your mission, your mission, that are going to be left behind. We all know how beautiful it is in and around it. And we really want that natural beauty, your culture, your history, to really reflect its beauty. And we have done it in previous projects. For example, on our recently completed project, we were able to take the gold sacred mountains and dare God inspire the interior and exterior of the school. On an adjacent project, wherever, from exterior to full and recapture it into the theme space. On Laguna project, that is beautiful, but we professionally photograph it and recreate it. And in the left and bottom corner, we reuse some of the materials which were the existing bricks from existing building to create this new property. And then on Cal Park, we actually worked with local competition to really capture the beautiful surrounding image. And then we use those to create this amazing super. In, in other words, a building in Cliff should be unique. It should reflect Cliff's culture, its natural beauty. And that's what our design principles were focused on. Juan, you're muted.
Thank you, Sanjay. Especially when it comes to schools like Cliff and the rural areas that, that they serve. Um, I myself graduated from Loving High School and I know how important things are, such as an ag program, um, gym space, what those means to communities and how they serve them. And so very much through our discovery process, we have visited the campus now multiple times and will actually be in town again on Wednesday for a design committee meeting. And we're definitely going to be digging in to understand what makes, um, this school special. What are things that they need to have throughout their process? And that discovery phase is where we look to understand what that, that special, um, space or special uses that the school absolutely has to have in their new building. And we look to incorporate those spaces and the uses for them into the design as we move forward. Throughout our design process, we'll take all of that discovery information and begin to program the building itself. We, you can see an example here how we've already started to look at what spaces and calculations are going to be required in each space, um, starting with the existing school space and also the, um, Silver City Consolidated, the Silver Consolidated Schools Cliff, uh, uh, facility master plan. We're looking at what those spaces mean and how they transit over into a new building. And then we check them back against state adequacy minimums to make sure that we are following and working with P S that they, as they are co-owner of the project. It's one thing to look at numbers, but it's a whole nother thing to begin testing these spaces as, um, actual test bits for adjacency with furniture and size and entry points identified. And we're going to be covering all of these with the instructors and school staff that really begin to understand how the final space is going to work with them in the square footage that we have set to make sure we're making the right decisions to move forward. All of these test bits will go through classrooms, um, special spaces, adjacency studies, the gym, which we know is an important space as well, and the seating that it can, um, definitely accommodate in the space, and analyze that all to bring that back to the design process to make sure we're moving forward together. After we get past the programming phase, we'll then enter the schematic design phase, where we'll begin to look at initial, um, three, uh, conceptual images of what the school may look like as a part of the planning process. We'll study the existing campus. That is the example you can see here with Chimmy's Elementary School, which is done for Los Alamos Schools. Um, the existing campus had a facility that was remaining on campus and we started to look at how the new facility would then begin to accommodate, um, not just the final plan for traffic and pedestrian circulation, but how it would work in the interim. And those concepts really are driven by the community the school serves. We make sure we dig down deep into understanding what makes that community special and how that can then translate into a graphical element for design building in the schematic design process. As we get to design development, which you'll see some scheduled dates for these milestones later on in the presentation, we start to begin actually drawing the building itself, putting some square footage calculations and spaces onto a floor plan that begins to take shape for the school. And this example for care of the municipal schools. We wanted to look at how the space would work with the existing campus for construction and study that actually in the design development process, which is when we begin to incorporate our engineers and also some of our interior designers to begin forming concepts that drive the entire design from interiors all the way through the architectural building elements too. And then when we get to construction documents, that's when we really start to lock down all of the final selections from the committee and school, um, on finishes and feel of the actual facility itself. We'll begin to study some three D, um, renderings that as we fly around the school, you can start to see how the site begins to take shape, how the building finishes on looking in relation to, uh, approach, traffic circulation, and how parents drop off and pick up is going to work on the site. And this is something we're definitely looking forward to producing as well on Cliff for the community to understand and all the stakeholders as well, what the final product is going to be as we are working to complete the design process and construction documents.
So throughout, like, like, like we mentioned earlier, throughout the whole process, throughout the design phase and construction, uh, we'll make sure that, that the project is, is, uh, that the community is, is aware of what, of what's happening. Uh, so there's a transparency on the progress, where we are throughout the entire design phase. So we'll have, uh, we'll, we'll come, we'll coordinate with the district and we'll come to live and, and, and have, uh, presentations to the, to record an event that the, the school has, whether it's basketball games or, or, or some events that are particular to live. We'll coordinate with the district to make sure that throughout the course of the design, we visit those, uh, the campus and inform the, the, the students, faculty, and staff. Uh, this side is one. So just having that student involvement, creating that spark and that interest so that they, they look forward to what's happening, they're, they're involved in, in understanding where we are. So like on the, on the picture of the lab, our team will, will be there and will, will answer questions, uh, in English, in Spanish, uh, to make sure that, that the questions are, 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 we can do our best to answer the questions that the community has. We'll bring in, we'll bring in, uh, one, one slide. So we'll bring in, I will present to the board at different locations. We'll keep a, a, a website open so that the community again is, 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 uh, understands where we are throughout the, the phase of the pod.
Absolutely. And you never know where inspiration is going to strike when it comes to this. You know, we had a project in Loving where an architect came in and presented to students and I really believe that that's the reason that I'm here today. So, um, with everyone's permission and full agreement, anything we post on the line, on the webpages will be vetted by the district and these student events will be made, um, to have as much fulfillment as possible. Um, when it comes to the innovation and function of the project itself, as I mentioned earlier, um, as we're going through the design, it's going to very much capture what the community of Cliff and the spirit of the community is bringing into the school. And through that process, whether it's through campus design and laying out the, the areas the students will have at the exterior or fun gathering spaces where every space in the building provides an educational experience and then capturing views and what that impact, what impact that had on the actual education environment. We're checking in every step of the way through our NASR certified experts for crime prevention through environmental design, that all of these are safe and secure environments for students to really be relaxed and be able to enjoy and, and in, in every aspect of use the facility to give the instructors opportunities for education and learning. And we're excited to bring that all in-house. We know that Cliff has a very extensive culinary arts program. And so you can see in the example in Burnaliel High School that we're going to look to dive into that and see what it means for Cliff to provide potentially a culinary arts experience where you go from not just the food preparation, but to actual serving and practice for table placements and what that means in a full culinary environment. And then the well-in program as well, we know that the Ag Shop definitely is looking to, um, perform, uh, the role of, of showing students what it's like to have an alternative career delivery method, to have a livable wage as they graduate high school. And so through our in-house expertise, we'll be able to lay out these labs to make sure, working with the instructor, they're meeting all requirements that you guys have or expectations in that lab space. And this doesn't just stop with the C T E. It also starts to involve the indoor and outdoor play areas. Um, having these environments that's fun, exploratory, and also functional, maybe adjacent to other spaces, provide opportunities for outdoor classrooms. Because all of the students, and especially with the education environment we have in a COVID environment, every space is available for learning and giving teachers the flexibility to do so. It's one of our core missions as your design process.
As Juan mentioned, it's one thing to design a school. Probably, but it's important. It's always huge.
Is that a sound?
On go with it. Yes, we have the campus, the students and staff are coming in, site separation has to be figured out. It will be a multi-phase construction and inclusion. But the key balancing act is on the other hand, we want to make sure that the new school, yeah, it reflects the value of it. Reflects the value of it. Reflects the beautiful neighboring surrounding natural views that we have. It not only meets the mission and vision of the district, but also addresses the, is a critical system. It not only meets the day-to-day needs of vehicular circulation on campus, but also addresses the vehicular. And then we have a game. It not only creates really engaging inside or indoor learning environment, but like Juan talked about, towards, although, letting everybody simply. And making sure that the campus is always safe. We already have started looking at your campus and have created a three D model that we brought in at the work interview and continue to build on that model, but those are very, very initial. But as they start taking in deeper and working to design community, this is nothing but just amazing opportunity. Looking to can we achieve the existing community, should it be? How can all the buildings stay completely on campus and functional while the new building goes in, which is on the next, that is age indicator, here, but, uh, again, very, very preliminary thoughts. But I, I definitely see a huge opportunity here to completely transform the three chambers. And that's where I'm going to bring our expertise to you all. So you tend to talk about, I think, an experience of over three hundred. But it, it's a numerical value. But what it clearly means, it's not a thing to you all to that. We want to bring to you and create a space that is really supporting vehicles that change everything. The pedagogies are changing as we are moving. And we want to bring that experience to you all. Our experience is to not be defining multiple schools, but they are going over to hundred design. And that to us is an acknowledgement that our designs are working really well. We also strongly believe that in any school, there should not be a wall for the sake of having. There should not be a corridor for the sake of just communicating. But each space should have an educational meaning, it should engage a school, it should spark that interest. that interest like one. It should be exciting, it should provide multiple opportunities through one-on-one coaching and learning with our mentors or peer-to-peer learning. But the fact is, each and every space should have a school to be there and should serve students and community alike. In addition to designing schools, we have spent hundreds of hours going back and doing a post-op evaluation of the school that we have built. And we have presented that information at national level. I myself have been published many times. And what it means to you is you want to bring this nationally informed, everything that we see not only in our state, but what is happening at national level. Our other districts reacting to the shifting educational dynamics. We want to bring all that information to you all so that we can make clear that the place is the right that we can.
Thank you, James. So we've gone through who we are as the sector, our design team, our process, the experience that we bring in to the projects and team. So on this slide, this is the project scope that is for Cliff. And this is based on our understanding of the agreement, the MOU between PS of A and the district, that basically is a complete replacement of the existing combined schools. The new facility is to serve 160 some students, grades pre-8 to 12, up to and establish the Mauvole square footage of 50,000 people. So on this one, through this programming phase, we'll meet with the district so we can have an understanding of the student involvement capacity and how that affects the square footage area. So if this changes, then we'll submit, we'll assist the district in sending a letter to DS of A with TS of A so that MOU could be amended. Part of the scope for work as well, getting through the assessment of the existing new gym and evaluating if it's worth renovating or versus a full replacement. So again, in conversations with the district and PS of A, we'll make sure that a recommended decision is arrived through the design process of what is going to benefit the school or the district better. And then of course, like we talked about, there's going to be demolition of two facilities in order to complete the entire, the entire project. On the right side of the slide, and Mr. Hawkins, if I go outside your A month duration, you said no, but basically the intent is for the design to be approximately 12 months. So for programming, construction documents, and each of the bases that Juan described earlier, we would be looking at bidding the project sometime next year around May and July. So through all these different bases, there's also TS of A approvals and processes that we have to put. So if all goes well, and as we planned it, we would be looking into the start of construction sometime around this year, next year. I mean, sometimes around this time next year, so approximately July 2026. Based on the complexity of the project, everything that has to go through in the basing and the, and the different improvements and demolition, we're looking at a construction schedule of 18 months. So that takes us to January 2028. Move-in, installation, final acceptance, those outs, testing, balancing, all those different components, we're looking at approximately a final school completion of March 2028. In discussing with Mr. Hawkins, we've anticipated that the school will be ready for fall 2020. This is basically taking the, all the design through construction, bidding, use of A processes to where we are now. And so I don't know, Mr. Hawkins, if there's anything that I misspoke or you want to verify for everyone online or in the room?
No, no. I look forward to you completing ahead of schedule. Soon as I get there. That being said, for the sake of time and respect for, or I'm going to let you guys move on, that was a subtle hint.
Then we're actually at the end of our presentation, Mr. Hawkins. I just wanted to let everyone know that as we're working through this, it's important that we're understanding that education has been through a transformation. You know, there's the incremental evolution that we know of technology and resources, but most importantly, the transformative transformation of education environment in general. The classroom on the left is an example of the facilities that we're replacing these days to facilities more that are working in spaces like on the right, where you have flipped learning and differentiated spaces that teachers and students are working with information that's omnipresent, right? So being able to understand that and provide spaces that are flexible to do that and make sure that every space within the building is educational. And so with that, we are excited to be a part of your team. Thank you so much for having given us time to introduce ourselves tonight, and we look forward to many more updates to the board in the week.
Thank you. Let me just see if there's any questions from the board at this moment. No, nothing. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We'll look forward to seeing you guys again soon. Have a good night.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I think we still have one more. We have to call them, they're going, we got to connect because.
Did I just hang up on them?
Yes, because Josh is next.
Were they on this?
Yep.
And I hung up on them?
Kind of.
Oh, great.
How do I call them back then?
Wow, that's impressive, huh?
Amazing what you do, what you can do when you give them 10 minutes to present.
Sounds familiar.
That's a Hawkins 10 minutes. Oh goodness. Ms. Smith?
We need to press one.
Press one.
Use your phone to listen and speak to the meeting.
Ms. Smith, Mr. Chisholm, can you hear me?
Does not look.
Molly? Oh. Molly, Mr. Josh Chisholm, can you both hear us?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Madam President, members of the board, we have our second presentation for the evening. It's almost like I'm presenting when you look at the time. That's about right. Again, I want to, I can't thank Decker enough for giving us a glimpse into the future for Cliff Schools. Madam President, members of the board, I now would like to take the time to present, introduce Josh Chisholm or reintroduce Josh Chisholm and Molly Smith. They're going to walk us through and present on our feasibility study. This is a project that you had us initiate in reviewing the recommendation from the facilities master plan regarding consolidation. From that, Josh and Molly, I will leave the floor to you.
Okay, and I believe if you can check my shot, he on the, here he comes.
There he is.
Right, great. All right, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Hawkins, thank you for having us this evening. I will get my presentation going. See if that pulls up.
And you should have this as well in your packets.
Can everyone see our screen?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, good evening. We, as Mr. Hawkins' vision, we have spent the last few months walking through the consolidation feasibility study as a reminder of this, facilities master plan, which we were fortunately not to be a part of. Tonight, we will be covering, Superintendent's going to provide an introduction message, Will introduces ourselves. We're going to go through the process and the goals that we had set forth for the consolidation study. We'll give you a little bit of background and context, which many of you will be very familiar with. We'll go through the scenarios that we talked about, what we considered within each scenario, that we will then finish with what were the committee's recommendations and what would an implementation plan and timeline look like. So with that, Superintendent, do you like to provide any information before we jump in?
No, I just want, well, yes. Currently, the view that we have is your slide PowerPoint and not necessarily in presentation view. I'm not sure if you have it in presentation view, but what we're seeing is your slide deck that way. So did you want to put it in presentation view so we can see the full? No, all right. I was looking for your notes so I could read from, no, I'm just kidding.
I'll just go entire screen. Everyone see if I can just put it up that way and give you the full.
There you go. That looks much better. I don't think that I have any other additional information to add to the context a few moments ago. Quite frankly, you did a really good job of that, and given the history of conversations we've had as a board, I think there's a, there's a deep understanding of this. I just want to acknowledge and thank all of the feasibility committee members, the parents, the teachers, the staff, grandparents or aunts. Our committee was comprised of individuals who live, reside, and are vested in our community and have nothing but the best intentions for what happens for our students. Just as the feasibility study had over 50 community members, we added, we had approximately 70 to 75 folks working in depth for the last year, looking at the information for our schools and giving us guidance, asking tough questions, and sincerely wanting to do what's necessary to guarantee a future for our schools and for our kids.
Very good, and thank you for covering the acknowledgements component, Mr. Hawkins, of slide deck, we'll skip that part. And there's quick introductions on Josh Chisholm, President of Ag Southeast. We also had Ben Clark, Ben could join us tonight, but Ben is also part of our team in all that, Molly Smith and Ben Michael, yourselves.
Hi there, Madam President, Superintendent Hawkins, and members of the board, thanks for having us tonight. I have seen many of you at the meetings we've been having, so it's great to see you again. As you know, I was your facilitator on the ground and planning into things, so I think we, I think we had some pretty good stuff to share with you tonight.
Great, Michael. Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent, members of the board, I'm Michael Sharp, Research and Pulling out of Albuquerque, and I'm just, I'm pleased to join this project and help you out as best as we can. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Yeah, as we step into the slide deck, we have a lot of slides to cover, we're going to move pretty fast. We hope that we cover the content with enough depth that you can understand it, but feel free to stop us or ask questions if you need to, or if you'd like to hold us in, we're happy to answer some of those. So we will step right into the process from here. Molly, if you want.
Oh, sorry. I forgot that took the first line. Sorry about that. When we started the, when we started this project, this is an extension of the facility master planning process, and this was, you know, something, one of our recommendations that we have in the master plan moving forward. And so we wanted to look at how we might best consolidate, especially our elementary because we had quite a bit of vacant space amongst the elementary that we have. We wanted to find the best fit. We also wanted to find the best boundary fit for enrollment as well, if we were looking at changing boundaries, you know, by closing any schools. We wanted to look at any improvements to the schools that we're going to need to make if we were bringing extra students in. You know, what would be the dispensation of any evacuated space? In other words, what would we do with the space that we evacuate? Would we demolish, sell, use for something else and so forth? And we wanted to talk about what the timeline would be for doing all of this. So the committee had decided their charge moving forward. Go ahead, Josh. The process is much like our facility master planning process, we start out with the group. You know, we really talked about the FMP outcomes because not all of our group were FMP members, so we wanted to make sure they understood that and what implications were going to be or change. Anytime we do a process, we build the facts for the group so that they can see all the facts laid out. We talk about the functional needs that we have as a district and the timeline, and we really asked the committee to start telling us their preference, helping us set a direction. And then, of course, that's going to give us a map to success, and in this case, there's a lot of moving parts to this process. So we have a fantastic group working with us. Go ahead, Josh. Here's some pictures from our work sessions. Everybody got into it pretty heavily. We had staff, parents, school administrators, community board representation, 20-plus committee members, and they came to all the meetings and were very attentive. It might have to do with the free food, I don't know, but they were very attentive. So we did have low coffee, so that worked good too. Go ahead. A little bit of background on this process, this is the, these are the goals that we had in the FMP in 2024, and you could see that the number one goal was facility improvement. And from Decker's presentation, you just saw we're already moving wholeheartedly into facility improvement out of Cliff. And we want to, you know, I think a big part of that outcome for the FMP was that we don't leave anyone behind. Sometimes you do an FMP and maybe one or two schools get concentrated on and the others get left behind. We didn't want to see that. We wanted to make sure that the district was using all of the facilities to the highest and best use. And then we had the other, you know, pretty nice goals as well, CTE development, professional development, technology, demographics, and enrollment became a big topic of conversation in the FMP and in this consolidation process because literally the district is sitting in schools that were built 50 years, 50 years plus, and 50 years ago, you had twice as many students. So nobody's bald, but as the demographics, as the enrollment drops, you know, a little bit at a time over that many years, you end up in schools that are half-full. And that means you're spending your money keeping those schools up when you could be using that money on programs and other things. So that was a big topic of conversation. We also talked about community partnerships, we had community members in our meetings, which was fantastic, and what's, you know, what's happening in the legislature? Because right now, we're able to get money from the legislature for school replacement, it may not be the same in future years. So we wanted to really act fast, and I know Will has really done a great job with that going down to the legislature. Go ahead, Josh. Just a quick reminder, in case some of you have not seen this, this is our historic enrollment. The left side of the graph is 2002, the right side of the graph is 2023. You see over 21 years or so, we've seen a steady drop in enrollment, you know, just going down steadily every year, about 2.4% per year, which is almost exactly the same rate that we're seeing births drop in New Mexico. We've been seeing a 2% drop in births for a very long time, so this is right on with what's going on for the state. Go ahead, Josh. And then we, our demographer projected what will happen in the future, and he projects that we're going to see a flattening, a little bit of a flattening to 2% per year in the next five years, so that's good. It's still a drop though, and it's not an increase, and there's really no big upswing in the foreseeable future, so that was a big if this were what to do with the extra space. Go ahead, Josh. That, let me keep going? Okay. Yeah. So let's talk about the FMP real quick. We selected an option in the FMP. We selected an option in the FMP to go out for a $24 million bond and to pursue a funding waiver from the state. That's the public schools authority. We, that funds schools in New Mexico or helps give you money, usually in a match, but in this case, sometimes the district doesn't have enough money to meet their match, and the, and the state makes it up, which is what the funding waiver does. And so really, the first thing that we had in the FMP recommendations that we showed you guys was to right-size the elementary schools to align with the current enrollment. That reason being that Sixth Street and Jose Barrios were already recommended for consolidation because of their age and cost to fix them or, you know, replace them, they're quite old. So we knew there would be a phased approach over the next five years to do that. Go ahead, Josh. And so you can see the value here that we're getting out of doing all of this. You know, the project value was $73.6 million to do all these things, replacing Cliff and consolidating the elementarys and so on and so forth. You know, we put in $24 million into the pie, and then the state is making up the rest, which is fantastic. Forty-eight, or 44.8 million going into the pot from them. So that, that's great, and we're moving along with this plan, you know, as we speak. Go ahead, Josh. And then finally, just a little update, and Will, you jump in and you see this. Everybody knows we got the GO bond in August of 2024 for $24 million. SB9, which was a 2 mil, you know, funding improvement to improve capital, you know, put money into capital improvements budget failed. We have some theories on why that might have failed, being that the second question, I think, was on the backside of the ballot, so people may not have seen that. So I think you'll talk about that later, Will. We did go in and apply for the PSFA and PSCOT awards, the funding waiver, and the awards for Cliff schools, and grants for some of the schools to replace major systems, and those are going terrific. We're getting, getting those grants and helping those schools as we speak.
Okay, so as we consider the facility's master plan, keep in mind that first line item was consolidation of Sixth Street and Barrios, and so that was really the impetus for jumping into this. And so what scenarios did we consider? That's what we're going to talk about next. So we had three topics here of consideration as we jumped into this conversation. First topic or scenario A was traditional schools, and we're going to talk a little bit more about this in the next few slides. The second scenario were grade banding, and the third, and with both of those, the question was, where does, where does Sixth Grade attend? Do they attend the elementary schools or do they attend the middle schools? So those top two, A and B, are in the elementary school bucket. And then last scenario C was a conversation about the middle school and the high school, and what a future consolidation conversation could look like. So what would, did we consider from a traditional elementary school perspective? That is roughly what the current setup is with, with exception to Sixth Street. And so Stout, Schmidt, Jose Barrios, all three of those, you can see they have their own boundary, and a kinder through sixth grade or first grade through fifth grade scenario would be the traditional school conversations. We talked a lot about traditional schools. We talked about all these different scenarios of what traditional schools could look like in the district. And then we also talked about grade banding. So for example, grade banding would be a scenario where Harrison would be a kinder through second grade, and then Stout would be a third through fifth grade, or third through sixth grade, and then all children would go to the same school with their age, based on their age, and it would be more like a cohort model. So we talked a lot about what are the benefits, traditional or the benefits of grade banding? How would that look in our district? We're going to go into more depth, but that is two, the two major scenarios or buckets that we considered for the elementary schools. I'm not going to go through this slide word by word, but these are just some examples that you can read with the differences between traditional and versus grade banding. Of course, every person, every, a parent may have a different perspective, as the teacher, student may have a different perspective as well. But all of those conversations are, were part of this process in the beginning to start narrowing our focus on what the committee believe is the best recommendation. So, all right. So as far as the consideration goes, what did we talk about? What were the things we discussed? We talked about facilities, educational adequacies, school boundaries, we talked about transportation, finances, is this going to cost us money, is it going to save us money? What happens to the staff? What happens, how could, how is this going to impact the educational world? What are the academics going to, are the academics going to be impacted? And then lastly, do we have capacity at these schools to consolidate? Remember, Molly said in the beginning that enrollment has declined, but the number of seats you had has, so that was a topic of conversation. Looking at facilities specifically, we took in, as Molly mentioned, we gather a ton of data, and we get that to the committee so they can make the form to the educator recommendations. So we did look at what is the condition of your buildings? How much maintenance do we have out there? We have just, just under $50 million amongst these schools. That does not include Cliff. Cliff was, was pulled from that conversation because of the replacement, but we certainly looked at that. We also looked at what are our operational costs and savings if we were to shed one or two of these buildings or schools from our portfolio? So from a high level, we look at how full are all of your buildings in your entire portfolio, and how much extra space do you have? If you were to build a new, brand-new school district today, how big would it be? How much square feet would it have versus what your current portfolio looks like? So as part of this process, we said, well, you can save about $1.5 million just in electric, gas, maintenance, and capital projects. And at JV and Sixth Street, which were the two that we were specifically looking at, it's about $150,000 a year of savings from an operations standpoint. Again, we looked at capacity and utilization. That was also a consideration as we walked through this. So just looking at these four schools, elementary schools in Silver City, we can see that the percent utilized, about 60% utilized, so a little over half of those seats are filled. And then if we consolidated, what would our utilization rate be? And so for this example that we threw up here for the board to consider, there's 666 open seats. We did not pre-determine that number. Mr. Hopkins told us we need to get that off our slides, but we can't change the number, so.
I didn't say only those three numbers. I just wanted them to add one or something.
And so the point of this slide here is to show that if we remove those seats from Sixth Street and JV, what would our utilization rate become? So removing those two seats shows if we brought all Sixth Street and JV students into now Schmidt, we would be at 94% utilized. So we could still have 389 open seats, but a much better utilization rate. All right. Next, we look at educational adequacy. So in this bucket, we look at, do we have the types of spaces, and do we have the size in those spaces? So for example, is our gym big enough to handle this many more students? Or do we have the right toilets for a bunch of kindergarten students at this school if we bring in 130 kindergarten students? So those are types of spaces, and size of spaces is, do we have enough square footage or number of classrooms? If we're going to bring all of the third graders in the district to this school, do we have enough classrooms to not go over our pupil teacher ratio, our student-to-teacher ratio that we're looking for? And the answer in some of these scenarios was, was no, we don't have enough seats. We cannot bring in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth into Stout. We would be at 104% utilization. But if we brought in third through fifth, we'd be at 78% utilization. And so we have just enough seats, not enough seats. All of those topics were discussed in the figure. Next, we talked about school boundaries. And again, we walked down the traditional schools route. And if you ask traditional schools, whether it be K5, K6, or 1516, whatever we currently have as well, we need boundaries for each of those schools and the students that are going there. Of course, we have, you know, a choice system where parents can choose to move their students or how that they do, but that, that was part of the conversation as well. And we will talk about the adjustments that were made to the school boundaries based on recommendations of the committee towards the end of this presentation. Transportation, we said, we're going to have more time, we're going to have less time. At the end of the day, what we determined was staying in traditional schools would be roughly a five to 10-minute increase for route times, and the grade banding would be roughly a five to 10-minute decrease in route times. So not, not a massive change either way, and that was something that we certainly needed to consider as we walked through this conversation. Lastly, considerations before I hand it back over to Molly is, we talked about finances. I was mentioning we have a bond program. What are the future considerations for bond initiatives? How much is it going to cost to improve, improve these buildings? And are there any savings? And then staffing, this was a conversation that certainly everyone was interested in discussing, and of course, the attrition, something that is very achievable and that no staff cuts would be necessary, we can, we can work through. We're still going to have the same number of students. And lastly, academics, we went down the conversation of how would teachers collaborate with each other? What would curriculum, would curriculum change? How would that change? Those, those are the considerations that we walked through, through this process.
We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Recommendation, so in walking through this with the committee, we had to start narrowing down some of all of these options. We had lots of different ways we could go. So we incorporated polls throughout this process with the committee to help direct our work as we went. So we asked, first of all, which elementary schools should close? We had 89% said Sixth Street and Barrios. And then we said, we wanted to look at which is the best option, which scenario is the best option, grade banding or neighborhood schools. The committee, you know, came back with 81% grade banding would be the best, and we would close Sixth Street and Barrios. And then we wanted to know about the sixth graders. You know, some time ago, the sixth graders were moved down, I believe, into the elementary to help maybe fill the elementary more. Not sure about the history there. But given the situation we're in now, where we're trying to make the schools, you know, work more efficiently, be built properly, and then the question is, you know, educationally, where is, would the sixth graders fit, fence, not just space ones? And 90%, 96% of the committee felt like the sixth graders fit with the middle school. Go ahead, Josh. So that narrowed down our work a little bit. We started looking at grade banding pretty seriously, and we looked at Schmidt being a K2 school, Stout being a three through five school, being that those schools had the best fit for those grade levels, given the attributes they had on, in the buildings. Go ahead, Josh. You can see on the left, if we make Schmidt K2, would be at 90% utilization, which is a very comfortable utilization, giving us room for some broke that we needed. We just put the little dots in each of the rooms and said, where would all the kindergartners go? Those are purple. You know, where would the special rooms be? Those are green. Where would the other grades go? Those are blue. And obviously, the principal will make the final determination, but what we wanted to know was, is the school designed in such a way that these rooms, especially the kindergarten rooms, you know, would they have toilets? That's a requirement for kindergarten rooms. Would they have adjoining toilets, and would they be the right size and all of that? And so that went nicely. Then we looked at Stout for three through five, and we came up with a 70%, 78% utilization there. So still very comfortable. See the keys on both of them? The gray dots? Those are empty rooms. And especially over on the Schmidt side, we, we determined we don't need to use the portables at all. We can get rid of them if we wanted to, so that's good news. Go ahead, Josh. We asked Josh's team to look at what would, you know, the playground, we're going to need kinder-specific playground on the Schmidt property and what to do there. We looked at, you know, can we move? Can we move the playground equipment over or a new playground? So we're not sure yet if we can move the latest one you have over to that property, but we're figuring about $400,000 as an outside cost to do that, and we would want to get that done, obviously, before you move the kinder into there. Go ahead, Josh. Let's see, sixth grade, so then, then we can't, we wanted to talk about sixth grade. Okay, if we move sixth grade over to La Plata, how does that work? And so we looked at that scenario. Go ahead. We asked, we did ask the question about the middle school and the high school in the short term and the long term. First question was, where should the sixth grade move? And 86% said La Plata. And then looking out past five years, we said, what do you believe is the best long-term solution for middle and high school, being that our middle and high schools also have a lot of extra space? 64% said we should look at building a new, a new sixth through 12 school and demolishing La Plata and Silver High School at that time. So that would, that would be, you would be in a scenario, past five years from now, going back to the state and asking for another waiver to do that, to bring, bring those facilities into compliance, both educationally and facility-wise and size-wise. Go ahead, Josh. We just took a look at La Plata and said, okay, how, you know, if we put the six and the eight in there, how would we do that? Would that work? Typically, when you have a middle school, you like to see something like this setup where you can have, each of the grade levels can have a wing, especially sixth grade. Sixth grade seems to be the one that we like to see a sixth grade house, and it is a good design for that. We, we still have a lot of empty space in the building, even putting sixth grade in there. We have a 61% utilization, but we think it fits into the building nicely, even just doing that right now. Go ahead, Josh. You know, and, and along with all the things that Josh talked about, these topics also came up as to successful implementation subjects. These will be part of our report, so it'll basically document all the things that we're talking, talked about and give guidance to the teams that'll go forward in implementing these things as we move forward, like communication, it's a big deal. Families are going to need to be communicated with well in advance, you know? They're going to need to know at least a year in advance what's going on. Transportation, they need time to map out all the new routes and so forth. Curriculum. If, if we're going into grade banding as the committee recommends, then you're going to want the curriculum folks to work together as to how that works. Staffing, professional development, facility maintenance, they need to know what we're doing so that they can stop spending money on places they don't need to spend money and start spending money where we need them to spend much. Thinking about a future bond project, how will food services work on the campuses, information technology, and financing budgeting? It's a lot of stuff, so there's a lot of work to do moving forward, but we got a good discussion on all of these topics. Go ahead and change the slide. Michael, you want to talk about the boundary map that we created? This was our backup plan, or if, if the district decided to go, continue to stay with the traditional setup, neighborhood schools?
And if you'll give me a second to, to jump in, I want to make sure I, I can add context to this. So while it was, it is true that the committee was very solid in their opinion and recommendation for going to grade in their opinion and recommendation for going to grade banning, I also wanted to make sure that we understood that there's got to be some dialogue and communication and feedback from the community. And I wanted to make sure that if in the end, while we were, while the board definitely followed or would follow the recommendation, that we had a backup. If grade banning wasn't the best option, or if that just didn't feel right with all the change, you know, what would the boundary lines look like if through the consolidation you still had boundaries? And so this next section is, is that, again, look at every angle and every possibility so that there's nothing left to be guessed about. Thank you.
Great. Well, thanks. So all that, we did take a look at what would happen if we just kept with the traditional neighborhood schools. And what were some of the basic parameters that we wanted to look at? And what we kind of came up with was just basically transportation patterns, specifically Arina's Valley. Today, the boundary between Schmidt and Stout is Highway 180 between Silver and Tonto Clara. And the north part going to Stout, the southern part going to Schmidt. And so we thought, well, what would happen and what would it look like if we put all of Arina's Valley, North and South 180 into one school? And how would that affect the, like, the rest of the district or Silver City area where those kids go to school? And so what the committee came up with was, let's focus on keeping Arina's Valley in a single district, single school. And on the other side of Silver City, Cotted Sand Road, just make sure that all the traffic that flows on the Cotted Sand Road would go to a single school. That really helps with transportation issues. Really, we, you know, a single bus has to go down to one school as opposed to maybe multiple buses going down the same, same road. At the same time, while looking at transportation patterns, we're also looking at attendance utilization. So we didn't want one school to have, you know, 500 students and another one to have 300 per sample. So we want to try to balance out that utilization, how the students would be going to each one. And this was finalized about a month ago during the committee meeting. And then the next slide, it'll just show just overall, big picture, what the school attendance boundaries would look like, assuming you stuck with the traditional neighborhood schools. So we have Cliff, nothing changed really, really with Cliff. We wanted to, to, I guess, clarify the boundary in terms of Cliff. The previous maps, it was really, really close to Cliff. And so we wanted to kind of have a going pathway between Cliff and Silver City, just to clarify that and get a nice line between the two. And then the biggest change is you don't see any sort of boundaries for footy bikes. That's, that's one of the things that was to be close. So we have Stout and Schmidt. And then on the next slide, we have a little bit of detail showing Cotted Sand and Arina's Valley, where everybody on each side of Highway 180 is going to Stout. Silver Acres, south of Stout, south of town, is going to Schmidt. And everybody coming in from the west on Highway 180, over from about Mungus Springs, I think, goes to Schmidt. That's kind of the big picture. We'll zoom in on the next one to just kind of go to northern Silver City. So it really just shows you what we had, Arina's Valley on the other slide. This is kind of a zoom in on Cotted Sand Road. So all the, Cotted Sand Road and all the feeder streets that go into it, including Bear Mountain, will go to Schmidt. And then on the other side of that boundary between Schmidt and Stout is Little Walnut Road and all the feeder streets that go to Little Walnut, all those students would be going to Stout. And then on the next one, we have just zoomed in more into the center part of town. And so north of 180 and east of Silver Creek goes into Stout. But there are some apartments across from JV that we put into Schmidt to kind of balance out the utilization, balance out the attendance, to try to make sure things kind of to work out okay. The, the rest of Silver City, Cotted Sand, western Silver City does go to Schmidt. And on, on the other side, along Mountain View, the west side down at Fraser goes to Schmidt. And the east side and then south of Fraser would go to Stout. So again, the traffic just kind of naturally flows to these schools the best that we can. Nothing's perfect, but given the basic parameters and try to balance everything out and look at various transportation patterns, this was a nice compromise between the factors we needed to consider. And then finally, what would some of the numbers look like? So taking a look at your current enrollment and, and plotting all the students on a map and figuring out, well, geez, if you move the boundary here, if you move the boundary there, how many students would be attending each school? How many students would be living within each zone? So if we look at this slide, you'll see that the proposed zone for Schmidt Elementary, the green road going across the far right, you have about almost 400 students who live within the Schmidt zone. But that is interesting to say, well, geez, there's almost 400 kids living there, but where are they going to school? And so it, it varies. So we have, you know, 78 kids who are currently going to Barrios, 174 of them in the Schmidt, 66 are going to Stout today. A number going six, but of course, that's, you know, the going way. And then some going to Cliff. But, and, and the same with Stout. We have a number of kids who would be assigned, if you will, to Stout. Some going from Barrios and Schmidt and Six. And Stout has almost 440 students living within its zone. So there's a lot of different students that, that would go to each school coming from or currently attending multiple schools. Interesting thing about this is there's a lot of room in both Schmidt and Stout that you might be able to accommodate where the students are currently going to school. So even though there are 66 kids currently attending Stout who live within the Schmidt zone, there's still enough room for those kids to continue to go to Schmidt. There's 83 students who live within Stout who are going to Schmidt. There's enough room in each school to kind of balance that out. So in an ideal world, perfect world, we'd still be able to accommodate all the requests of, of parents who want to attend, have their kid attend a school that isn't necessarily within their zone. And there's also room potentially to continue accepting students from out of district. And so you have 36 students from out of district going to various schools. And there's potentially enough room to continue having those kids attend the Silver High School. So it's a lot of numbers, a lot of different information, but I think there's some flexibility with what can be done in terms of how many kids live within their zones and where the parents might want to send their child or their education. So that's what I have.
All right. So we, as we worked through the committee meetings, the committee made a recommendation. This is where we think the students should go. These are the schools where they should attend. Okay, how, how soon can we do this? What's, what do we need to do to get this accomplished? And so assuming the board considers this recommendation, we put together a proposed timeline for implementation. And so from the top left, you can see in May, we had a final committee meeting. We're here today in June for the board presentation. This would come back to the board, take the summer, consider these recommendations, and make a decision August, which would give about a year to make, make things happen. And so in September, administration would plan and start getting to work from the fall through the spring. All that communication and preparation will be done. Next May, Sixth Street and JV would close. And then over the summer, there would be construction at Harrison Schmidt and some construction at Stout to get those schools ready. Of course, all the moving would need to occur next summer. And then in August, school would start with the new schools. So it would be Harrison Schmidt for kindergarten through second grade. Stout would house the third through fifth grade classes. La Plata would pick up sixth graders, so it'd be six, seven, eight. Middle school, of course, the high school. That would cover 2026. And then the last piece that we discussed is kind of a future consideration. But we did discuss potential of building a combined school that's close to what La Plata Middle School and Silver High School. That's, you know, five plus years out, but we did have that conversation as well. And something that really should be on your horizon, those, those two schools are. We've got very eligibility with the state. And you're in a unique position financially to have that conversation, most likely in the next SOTI's bachelor. And so with that consideration, this is just one slide. With our discussions on middle school and high school, you can see on the left, obviously, this is your current situation. And on the right, we talked about how we accomplish this. If we were to build a six, 12 school, we could put it in a combined school near the practice field. We could get one middle school and put it where the middle school is. We could have one high school where the high school is. And included in this conversation is where we have enough space to house these six, seven, eight graders in the high school while we rebuild the, the new combined school or vice versa. So we did get into a little bit of depth on how this could be accomplished at the middle school and high school. And we wanted to share that conversation with the board as well as the committee. And so next steps, kind of just covered that. Board's going to consider consolidation at the August board meeting. And then we get to work over the next 12, 18 months to get this accomplished. With that, we will turn it over, back over to Mr. Hawkins.
Madam President, members of the board, you'll get a, a report from Capital AE that kind of reflects this to keep in mind that over the course of the, the meetings that the committee had, there was over 240 slides of data and details that were reviewed by the committee. And so the recommendation, recommendation that you're receiving is a result of a lot of work, a lot of scrutiny, a lot of tough, candid conversations, but an honest understanding of what will be necessary for the schools. I just want to thank Capital AE and the committee for this. I also really did appreciate the insight and the peek into the future as we are addressing and looking at the needs that we have now, realizing that many, many, many things can change. But I like that you as a board can make some decisions now and also can begin to lean into what you can imagine for silver schools in the years to come.
Questions? See, I'm going to open them.
And if there are any questions, and as well, Josh, Molly, Michael, thank you so much. If you'll stand, don't stand literally, but if you'll hold tight for some questions from the committee.
Any questions for Josh or Molly from the board?
Just a lot to take in.
I, I will, I'll, I am so thankful that I had the opportunity to sit in because yes, sitting on this site as a board member to digest four meetings of a ton of information in one meeting setting is a lot. I can only imagine your brains have to feel like they're exploding. Mine does, and yet I had the preview of all of this all along. So I don't think there are any questions currently. I obviously am available for questions from the board, as is Mr. Hawkins. So we just thank you. It's always nice to kind of see the same faces with us through this process. You came to us about a year ago and then helped us to this next step. And a lot has happened since then, right? We got the bond passed, we've got Cliff rolling. So we just really thank you for coming alongside us and preparing kind of a roadmap of how we would navigate the next steps of our FMP. So thank you very much. And we will be in communication with you over the next two months as we prepare for this decision that we have coming up in August. And thank you very much. Very thorough, wonderful presentation. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. No, is it gone? Is it there?
Everyone else has left.
There we go. So I think what we can conclude is Mr. Hawkins' presentations are pretty normal.
I want that on the record.
The next item on our agenda is Mr. Luis Alvarez, our Associate Superintendent with Personnel Update. Cindy, will you be doing that for us tonight?
Actually, Madam President, there's a, I have that.
Mr. Hawkins.
So I will be brief. I reduced it to 83 slides.
Thanks.
But just to acknowledge Mr. Alvarez, I did ask him to attend the community meeting right now that's taking place at the Grant County Convention Center regarding the trout fire. And so that was scheduled on, I think, this weekend for today at 6 o'clock. So I asked him if he'd sit in for us to gather any information. I did ask him to not to commit any other additional buildings, but we'll see how that goes. If I, I would be remiss if I did not start off by saying we are currently at 94% filled, but we are in the summer. And so he is working dutifully to fill those positions. Currently, he's already filled one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of these positions. We are interviewing for our esports position. We have replaced a custodial position that was already, between the time it was filled or resigned, he's already, they've already interviewed and hired for that position. Same thing, they're in the process of interviewing for custodial position for one of, for silver scholars. He is dutifully working through this, his list, but he's at 94%. He does apologize, but he's, he does believe that we will get to 100, or as close to 100% as he can get before August the 4th.
Awesome. Any questions for Mr. Hawkins on the personnel report? All right. Associate Superintendent, Ms. Cindy Barris, with our enrollment update.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Mr. Brandon Hawkins, colleagues and guests. Real quick, you know, we're in that really funny part where people add and people take away. We did increase last month, but this, this month, we decreased by four. So it's just four, and it's summer. And it'll be interesting to see what it looks like next month. But oftentimes, that's what happens right at this time because some of the families who have told us they were going to move, and I can think of two right off the top of my head, waited till the end of the year and then moved. And then some people don't tell us and then just don't show. So it'll be interesting to see what those numbers look like in the next few months.
Thank you. Next up is our mental health grant coordinator, Mrs. Joyce Padala. Welcome.
Madam President, Mr. Hawkins, and members of the audience. I do have quite a bit of data, but I'm not going to go through the whole thing. There's just a few things that I want to point out. The first set of data is based on the check-in and checkout from the wellness room. The, the numbers show that 32% of our total school population utilized the wellness room at least one time this past year. Most of the students who came to the wellness room came because they were feeling overwhelmed, stressed, tired or sad. Most of the students who came to the wellness room came into the wellness room on their own accord, either because they needed an emotional timeout, they had scheduled therapy, or they needed somebody to talk to. 75% of the students who left the wellness room felt better after being in the wellness room. For next year, on the checkout form, we're going to include the grade level. That'll really help us when we're trying to disaggregate the data, especially for Cliff. We're also going to add a question on the checkout sheet that asks what activity the students engaged in when they were in the wellness room because that'll be some good data going forward. New Mexico Public Education Department did put out a request for applications. They have some grants for wellness rooms that'll cover up to $125,000 for the year. So not knowing where we stand with our school-based mental health grant right now, we did go ahead and apply for that grant. It's only for middle school and high school. Right now, between La Plata, Silver High School and Cliff, we have three full-time mental health providers. This amount of money wouldn't be enough to cover all of them, but it would at least get us closer to where we would be if we didn't have that funding. We're supposed to be notified by the end of this month whether or not we receive that, that grant award. The next set of data is from Alongside. If you recall, Alongside is the app that is accessible to students in grades five through 12. We have 455 students who are actively using the app right now, and they've engaged in 7,030 activities. We did have 15 severe alerts. These are alerts that students, when they were communicating with Kiwi on the app, talked about self-harm. And so we do get notified on those. So the principal and myself meet with the mental health provider. They pull out the student. They pull out the student, they have conversations with them, figure out what's going on, contact parents. And then they send an email to myself, Ms. Barris, include the principal, and we make sure that we document what happened and where, what the next steps are in order to deal with the student who was in the crisis at the time. I think the most powerful data, well, one of the other things is on the top journal prompts. The most popular data that students are watching is that first one on the mental health journey. It's a video by Billie Eilish. And I went in and watched the video because I'm like, okay, what are our students watching? Why is this so popular? She really talks about the importance of seeking out support for mental health and that it's everybody's responsibility to keep an eye out for others and speak up if they're seeing other people who are in need. That was a really good video. I think the most powerful data in this whole thing is the student comments. And there's just a few comments that I wanted to point out. One student said, "I really liked that it showed interest in the things that I liked. I liked the advice and having somebody to talk to. I'm glad Kiwi doesn't dismiss my feelings." Again, the importance of being heard. "It exceeded my expectations. I liked that you used examples and encouraged me to practice being nicer to myself. How you helped me with a hard time like this. I loved how you gave me perfectly worded prompts that somehow I was able to come up with a plan really fast." And so those were, those were the, there is a lot of comments, but those are the ones that stuck out to me the most. Under McKenney Vento, we did apply for the Silver Sox Anti-Hunger Initiative for twelve thousand dollars. We did get awarded that grant, so that'll be used for our food boxes for next school year. And then our next chat committee, we didn't have a committee meeting this month. Our next one is scheduled for July ninth at three thirty. Back to the administration office for those meetings.
Awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Barra La. Any questions for Mrs. Barra La? All right, that is great data, I love that.
Thank you.
I will just add, if you, if you're not, I think we are all enabled, we can log onto that app as being, being parents or whatever. But I will add, I've sometimes put some stuff into just chat, like, why am I feeling this way? And it'll tell you like, maybe because of this, consider this. So very interesting, this stuff. I mean, sometimes people are very skeptical of AI stuff, but for the little bit that I've kind of just played around with, it, it seems very relatable, so.
And I have it on my phone as well. And I have gone in and done some chats as well and I feel the same way. You wouldn't know that it is AI on the other side, but I do agree with the student that I felt like Kiwi does listen to me and Kiwi does take my thoughts and my feelings into account before responding to me.
Yeah, I would agree. Super cool. Thank you.
Madam President, I do have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pimentela.
On the referrals going into the wellness rooms, are these gonna be just, just any general referrals? Or are these like behavioral referrals?
It could be either.
Do we have a number of, or do we know which, what is what and how many are really going in based on a behavioral referral and what kind of outcomes are we getting from?
Not based on the way that we have the students sign in. We don't have that specific data because we have, if you'll notice on the check-in, we have just like their feelings, how they're feeling when they're coming in, whether they have an appointment or whether they walked in on their own and the reason for their visit. So we don't have that as an option. It's something we could think about, whether we want to say, you know, I was brought over here because of my behavior, something like that, that might be an option that we could include on the reason for the visit. But right now, we don't have that data.
Thank you, Mr.?
Mrs. Barra La, so for the parents or guardians watching right now, how can they get onto Kiwi?
They go to?
Website?
Alongsideapp.com, I believe it is. Almost positive that's what it is, Alongsiteapp.com. Or they could go into the, what I did is I actually went into the App Store and I downloaded the app onto my phone.
And it's free?
It is. Well, we're, we're, it's free for our staff and it's for our district personnel, students, parents, because we do pay for us, our students and staff and parents to have access to it.
Free to them, but the district does cover the cost from the mental health grant. How much is that? Okay.
Madam President, members of the board, I do think that as we've looked at the potential issues that may come up with what, law back from the feds, Ms. Barris has taken steps to look at the resources that we can afford to manage and maintain. And we have seen a benefit too, to look at how we can embed that in with her, with her other budgets to be able to sustain those. So thankfully, we've got a Ms. Barris and a Ms. Barra La that look forward and see, and to see what we can do is what we have.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is our Director of Finance, Ms. Michelle McCain. Would you like to present the increment schedule right now?
Yes. Many of the increment schedules failed to do that with my budget.
Okay.
Our increment schedule is presented to you with two changes from last year. We have in the Silver Heights salary schedule, we have removed chess and replaced it with esports. That's based on the participation process. There is a process that was set up by Ms. Alvarez and the athletic directors to vet programs coming on and going out. And so we didn't have participation in chess and we have a growing interest in esports. And so we added esports to Silver High School. And then Cliff has worked to get cross-country added onto their side. And so we've added cross-country.
Golf, right?
Yes, golf. Cross-country is what they're working on. Thank you.
Yep, golf.
They got real excited for a second.
But other than that, there are no other changes on our increment schedule. Unfortunately, we're not able to increase the value of our increment schedule because we're at peak payroll.
Any questions from Mrs. McCain?
Madam President, I have a question on the district-wide, I believe it is. Would, would you be open to Mrs. McCain, the grant writing slash asbestos? If we separated that into one being grant writing and the other being, what is it? Asbestos inspection or consultation or something along those lines?
It's actually only ever been used for the asbestos. They maintain the documentation for the district for asbestos. I don't know if somewhere, had to be prior to me because I don't ever remember us having a grant writer on there. Probably Mrs. Stevens went back in the?
Nineties?
Possibly had that position, but the only person that we have employed on there is asbestos. Person who maintains the data for this.
Would you be opposed if we cleaned that up and just deleted the grant writing then?
To change it to grant writing?
No, if we just cleaned it up.
Just leave it.
Grant writing? Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, perfect.
Because it is missing.
What would the process be for that?
Um, we would have to, in, when I take it to the union, because it was ratified by the union, I'll take it to them, explain the name change and the kind of the history on it. They'll, once they approve it, I'll bring it back to you and make it fully approved for the next one.
Is that okay?
Or if we make a motion with the amendment to approve it amended tonight, then take it to them? And, I mean, does it have to come back and be ratified?
Yeah.
Yes.
It still has to come back?
If they accept a amended version, then we, you should be good since you as a board have already?
It's those two levels of approval.
Two spots.
Okay.
And I'm not gonna speak for the union, but I don't see an impact for the edit of the language, so.
Thank you.
I think we're taking action later so we can flatten the language.
So when I take action, when I offer action on it, I will ask for approval with the amendment?
Yes, that sounds good.
Madam President, members of the board, can you ask for that, ask for the approval with the amendment? If you'll also mention that you will acknowledge going back to the respective, that their, their voice and process as well. That'll be perfect.
And that'll have to be in the new year because we won't need again until they're back.
When do you, you're only paying asbestos even if you were to pay it in July, right?
Um, I believe that one gets paid half in December and half in?
So it'll be fine. Okay, perfect. All right, any other questions for Mrs. McCain on the increment schedule? All right, Board of Education Finance Subcommittee Report. Mr. Con and myself met with Mrs. McCain and Mrs. Alvarez and Mrs. Lucero last Thursday, regularly scheduled at four PM here in the board meeting. We reviewed the budget variance report, just for me to kind of clear up my head and what it all in, it includes, which was at like seventy percent something, you guys have it in your board packet. We talked about the Title I cut that we will be approving in a bar, two hundred and ninety thousand late in May, was also highlighted earlier during our work session by Mrs. Barris. And just kind of discussed the concern of what the future could hold. Again, that's, you know, when you get your budget in June or July and you budget your budget based on those numbers, and then they can pull two hundred and ninety thousand in May. For many school districts, luckily not us, for some strange reason. We're blessed enough to not always, not have the worst case scenario happen, but that money could have already been spent, right? Because it's on a reimbursement basis and so that is concerning. We took a look at also last year or last month, how the state took back four hundred thousand from our SEG. So when you add those together, we're looking at seven hundred thousand. And when we approved a budget just recently, the only kind of potential projected cash carryover we were looking at was six hundred thousand. And so those two numbers right there are more than that number. So things to be concerned about, but Michelle is staying positive and not worrying about things she shouldn't worry about, per Martha's advice. I was curious about, as we all know, many salaries and benefits are paid out of title funds. And so I was curious at what it would look like if all salaries and benefits needed to be absorbed with our SEG. And just to kind of put it out there very clearly, we have about a thirty-three million dollar budget and we pay thirty-two million dollars in salaries. And so without title funds, it would be very, very hard to run this district on just a million dollars. We thought that would be an interesting learning activity that we participated in. We also talked about, Patrick brought up some ideas of possible investment of our funds if they're available as they sit there getting ready for projects. And so I, I know he was gonna talk to Mr. Hawkins and as well as Ms. McCain and see if they thought that would be something that would be good to look into, just as we're preparing for projects. But at the same time, that cash needs to be liquid and available for projects. So I'm sure they did that. And then finally, we talked about the RFP for the audit. As you guys remember, we are phasing out around our, that was our last of six years, I think, is that right? That we did with Stone McGee?
I think so.
You have to rotate off your auditor for two years. And so we are in that area of time. They sent out an RFP, we were really adamant about wanting someone to come and do it in-house. We had no responses. And so they amended it to stay, they would prefer in-person. And so we will see where that goes. Anything else to add, Mr. Con?
You've covered all the topics. I did give that information to Mr. Hawkins and Michelle so they could reach out and just go from there.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Any questions for us for the Finance Committee? All right, next one is Audit Subcommittee, did not meet. There's no audit going on, but we did discuss a few things in Finance Committee I shared with you. Threat Assessment Committee did not meet. And then we've got Board President, I will do these, we've got a second reading for some policies we mentioned last month, I will take action on later tonight. We also have a first reading on a few other that just came in. So this is the second reading of NMSBA Policy Advisory Number Two Sixty-Three IKFB, Graduation Exercises, and Number Two Six Four JK, Student Discipline. A first reading of NMSBA Policy Advisory Number Two Sixty-Five EBC, Emergencies, Number Two Sixty-Six IA, Instructional Goals and Objectives, Number Two Sixty-Seven NEW, JICJ, Use of Cellphones and Electronic Devices in Schools. There are two alternatives. Number Two Sixty-Eight NEW, JLCEC, Cardiac Emergency Response Plan Automated External Defibrillators, and Number Two Sixty-Nine NEW, JLIH, Parental Guidance for Water Safety. Next is Board Comments, I will keep them swift. I, it's, you know, we all think that June is gonna like kind of slow down a little bit. And it just doesn't, right? I guess what you educators and administrators do is you take what little extra time you find when the students are not in school and you fill it with other things, as is apparent by our Decker presentation and, and the Capital AE. I will say it's an exciting time, like I always do to be in Silver Schools. I, we were curious when the last time a school was built in our district. I'm sure somebody knows that information, but it's been a really long time. So exciting times, my daughter says, it's not fair, right? That's what Silver's gonna say, we know, it's not fair. And I said, well, how do we know now what we knew then? Four or five years ago, we would have started Cliff and then Silver Schools and La Plata would be coming up. But we're, we're learning and thankful that we brought in Mr. Hawkins to help lead us through the process of finding out what we've got to do to get this done for our district. Exciting times and very thankful that Capital AE kind of gave us like a look into the future of what is possible if we stay on this course. I do hope somewhere, somehow, you guys are finding some time to rest because it is already the middle of June and on our agenda, it's already talking about the first day of school. So find that time somehow, some way, get rejuvenated because Silver Schools is not slowing down. Thank you so much, Mr. Con.
So I just wanted to thank, you know, Marisol, I don't know if she made this beautiful. Well, that's amazing. Well, that's phenomenal. And I know who to call to make some decorations for future occasions for my, my things coming up. But I just wanted to take the thing, time to thank, you know, all, you know, we always thank teachers, administrators. But I wanted to just take this time to thank, you know, the lunch personnel, the custodians, the bus drivers, the office staff, the nurses, the counselors, librarians and volunteers that keep us going throughout the school year. Your commitment to Silver Schools does not go unnoticed. And I just wanted to personally thank you all for all that you do out there. The lunch personnel, they keep going all summer because they have the summer school lunches. So, you know, they continue to be out there and feeding our children within the district, you know? But this time they get to play at a park and just enjoy themselves. And, you know, this would not all be possible without our taxpayers. So I wanted to thank our taxpayers for their continued support with Silver Schools because without that geo-bond, you know, without their support, this would have never been made possible. So I just wanted to make that out there.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Con. Mr. McMillan?
Yes, thank you. Couple of things I'd like to share. One, I think the presentations today are really eye-opening and it's a lot to take, to absorb. But it's very exciting. It's good to see the Cliff project taking off and then also seeing what we can do in town to be more efficient, more effective with the use of our space and, and more efficient with our, our funding as well. And I think kind of looking back many years ago, a lot of times we, I would hear comments, you know, how come so-and-so has got a new school? How come so-and-so, I go over, I travel here, they've got new schools. We don't, how come Silver doesn't? Well, guess what? Silver is now on the track. A lot of that has to do, of course, with the bond election. And again, like A lot of that has to do, of course, with the bond election, and again, like Mr. Con said, thank you to the voters. Thank you to Mr. Hawkins and all the work from administration and staff to, to get where we are, because we're moving forward with that, and it's, it's exciting to be in that spot. The other thing I wanted to mention is thanks to Mr. Hawkins and the other school personnel for opening up our doors to our schools for the fire response. We've got a lot of communities in our area that are hurting coworkers, we've got friends, family that are, that are impacted heavily having to evacuate, so thank you to the schools for opening up and being a resource during this time of need. And hopefully we can get some control to the fires and get back to normal, but we'll need some rain, definitely, so prayers for some rain and and safety for those that are here to help fight those fires during this time. And then on a lighter note, a couple of months ago, during Board Appreciation Month, the Cliff Schools and Coach Shock presented, myself being their board member, a fly rod that they had made during their class, and I'm happy to report a couple of weeks back, that fly rod went out to the catwalk and caught its very first fish. And so, and it's, of course, it was a gila trout, a small one, but a gila trout out of the catwalk, so. I've got photos, I was gonna try and shoot it over there to Mr. Pot, so he could put it up on the screen there, and maybe I'll try that next month, but thanks to Coach Shock, and I sent, I did send him the picture, and I said, hey, it catches fish, so. Enjoy the rest of, those on summer break, enjoy the rest of your summer, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan, Mrs. Clement.
I just also want to reiterate thank you to the community, and especially the community members taking the time out of their busy schedules and a lot of them out of their work schedules to participate in all of the committee meetings, and so it is definitely a grueling task, but it's one that's very, very important, and I knew several members, people that were on these committees that, just a very diverse group of people that have all different backgrounds, and so it's, you know, different parents and business people, and as well as staff and administrators, and so I definitely wanted, I think it, we have all agreed that this is all possible because of our community, and so that's just another level of support that our community is providing. And then also, the same, reiterate prayers for our firefighters and prayers for rain, and definitely thank you, Mr. Hawkins, for opening up the doors in the response, and we definitely need, you know, our firefighters to stay safe and to get this under control. And then everybody as well, too, stay hydrated, I know we're getting into some really hot days, and there's a lot of, I knew some people were coming through that we met just this last week, that were coming in to hike in certain areas, and one of those things, just come in and drink water, and even kids outside and playing, I know it's not really all that cold to drink out of a water hose anymore, but take it where we all live. So just stay hydrated and, and have fun and be safe.
Thank you, Mrs. Clement. The next session is Open Public Comment, Lisa, do we have anything? Thank you. Then Action Items are consent agenda, I will turn it over to Ms. McCain.
Good evening, everybody, I think I have a little bit of everything tonight. First and foremost, on my A one, A one, total checks written for the month of May, I seek the approval in the amount of three million, seven hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and one cent for checks written in May. Budget adjustment requests, I really don't want to ask for this one, but I have to. I seek a reduction of our Title I budget by two hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. The leaving given by Ted was for the revised final allocations. And so some of the schools did receive more money, in our case, we did not, we were one of many schools that received a reduction. And so we have that reduction to, for approval tonight. Awards of bids and proposals for tonight, we have our milk bid, we had our sole bidder, the Dairy Farmers of America, also known as Price's Creameries. They are, they were the sole respondent, and therefore we will receive our milk bid for this year. And then, once again, we have a wonderful, long laundry list of donations for our district. We have received from the Town of Silver City for N H D, ten thousand dollars. We have from D C N M Property Holdings, which is McDonald's, N H D, Silver High received an additional five thousand dollars. The Town of Silver City gave La Plata N H D five thousand dollars. The New Mexico Humanities Council gave La Plata N H S, N H D, as I mentioned, three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Harvest Fellowship Assembly of God gave Silver High Boys Basketball twenty-five hundred dollars. And again, McDonald's gave Silver High Boys Basketball twenty-five hundred dollars. We have Suburban Propane, which donated eighteen hundred dollars to Silver High N H D. Hill Regional Medical Center donated fifteen hundred dollars to Silver High Boys Basketball. Bo and Shalica Bradbury donated one thousand dollars to the TSA Nationals for Cliff. Martha and Michael Johnson donated a thousand dollars to Silver High N H D. Which goes on and on. Silver City Dental donated a thousand dollars to N H D. K P Sorry Enterprises donated five hundred dollars to Close TSA to take them to Nationals. We had the Elks Club donate to several organizations, we had donations to Silver High Golf Team for five hundred dollars, Silver High Art Club for five hundred dollars, Silver High History Class for five hundred dollars, and Silver High Class of Twenty Twenty-Five for five hundred dollars. We had Wa Chuku donate five hundred dollars to La Plata N H D, Silver High Moose Lodge, I mean Silver City Moose Lodge, pardon me, Silver High Mode, donated five hundred dollars to Girls' Summer Basketball. Leon and Kimberly Clement donated five hundred dollars to Silver High N H D. The Committee to Elect Luis de Rasa donated five hundred dollars to Silver High Bar City Basketball. Suburban Propane donated five hundred dollars to Silver High Girls' Basketball. And Silver City Moose Lodge donated five hundred dollars to Silver High Boys Basketball. And so for all of these things, I ask your approval, and for all of our donations, I ask for your best gratitude for our community.
Thank you, do we have a motion for the consent agenda as presented?
Motion?
Thank you, Mr. Con, do we have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion?
Thank you to the many, many community donations again.
We're humbled. For a second, conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and the opposed, that motion passes, thank you, Mrs. McCain. Mr. Antonio Undezola, our Maintenance and Transportation Director, has nothing to present, so we'll move on to our final approvals, so consideration and approval of the I D E A B application as presented earlier by our sped director, Mr. Shane Coker. Do we have a motion, motion by Mr. Con, do we have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and the opposed, that motion passes. Consideration and approval of the Special Education Procedures Manual Updates. Open the floor for a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Clement, do we have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and the opposed, that motion passes. Considering, consideration and approval of the title budgets as presented by our Associate Superintendent, Mrs. Cindy Barris.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Con, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Clement, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and the opposed, that motion passes. Consideration and approval of the second reading of the New Mexico School Boards Association Policy Advisory Number Two Sixty-Three I K F B, Graduation Exercises, and Number Two Sixty-Four J K, Student Discipline, do we have a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Mr. McMillan, do we have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. Con, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and the opposed, that motion passes. Consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools F Y Twenty-Six Incremental Schedule with amendments pending the approval of the S C E A. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Clement, do we have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and the opposed, that motion passes. Open Public Comments?
Mad President, members of the board, I'd be indulged for a few seconds.
Of course.
So throughout the year, or, let me rephrase that. Throughout the spring semester, at one point, we stop and pause, and we take an opportunity for our staff and such to nominate and recommend teachers and staff persons of the year, and we recognize them right before the school year ends. We also did the same thing for our staff who works not necessarily in the building, but they may work at Central Office or Maintenance, Transportation, any of the other departments that wanted to nominate and then give us an opportunity to do, to recognize that person. I'd like to take a moment, just briefly, to recognize this person.
Yes.
And so, Mr. Pot, if you don't mind coming forward. To be behind the screen, the reality is, it's hard to quantify the contribution that every department makes above and beyond, the reality is, everyone devotes countless hours, whether you're Maintenance and Transportation, getting here early in the morning and leaving late, and making sure that buses move one time, whether you are working in the business office, no giving up weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, because if you could, you'd give every single person an award. But the other aspect of that is, is taking a moment and recognizing the people for just a minute. And the reality is, Mr. Pot's is one of those individuals that is here Saturdays, Sundays, before school, after school. He actually plans out his time to be able to use our, to correct and fix and update our systems when no one's here, and that family's not getting paid, right? He does that, we, about a year ago, a little, little beyond this moment, we dealt with a huge issue that dealt with the potential for our data to have been ransomed. You know, the efforts of Mr. Pot's kept that from happening, and then all of the efforts that kept that from happening, he then had to turn around and painstakingly rebuild our network and our system. That's in the end, on top of doing everything else with his team, it's an amazing team, but Mr. Pot's incredibly selfless, and we would be remiss, we didn't have a moment to just simply say thank you, so, simply put, thank you.
Can we get a picture? We need a picture.
Yeah.
Can you make me taller?
Get the shoes.
Thank you for everything. I forgot to put in the request for that tech room in Cliff, but I, I will be sure to do that. That would make his life just a little bit easier. All right, thank you for that, Mr. Hawkins. Future meetings and proposed agenda items, real quickly, Decker is gonna be meeting weekly to start. So this Wednesday at nine AM at Cliff. But also there is a way to remote in, so they would like you, Mr. McMillan, to show if you can, but let's try to coordinate to at least get one board member there if you guys are able to. They take about an hour and a half, nine to ten thirty. And if, if, again, we can just communicate through the text if you can make it, but right now, tentatively, every Wednesday at nine AM.
Some ogre has to want an aggressive schedule.
I don't think I can make it in person, I've got a ten o'clock Wednesday. I can do maybe a remote, but.
It will have that capacity as well.
Somebody will send out though. I haven't seen the invite go out yet.
I think I saw, go out to Amanda, I will follow up to make sure that everyone has.
Okay. Then we've got our Leadership Retreat in Cloudcroft. At the moment, I think Lisa only shows Patrick going, does anyone else plan on going? The tenth to the twelfth in Cloudcroft. There's not very many rooms, so. Yeah, okay. Anyway, so, N M C E L Summer Leadership Conference in Albuquerque, and then we've got our Annual Convention in December. Just make sure you get your hours before the end of the year. District Events, this is one of those where you guys probably just want to put earmuffs. Employee Orientation, July twenty eighth to twenty ninth, so new employees, staff development and in-service, July thirtieth through the thirty-first. Swimming Pool, First Staff and Student Event, August first and second. Silver and Cliff Schools first day will be August fourth, and Silver Scholars, August seventh. Executive Session, the board may elect to go into executive sessions for reasons permitted in the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, see N M S A nineteen seventy-eight subsection ten dash fifteen dash one, H one through nine, and we will go in briefly, somebody quote me on this, just to review Superintendent Contract, so a motion to go into executive, please.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Con, do we have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. McMillan, and a roll call, please.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz? Myself, yes, Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Clement?
Yes.
Eight seventeen.
Eight seventeen.
8:17.